Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the July 11, 2023 regular monthly meeting of the Tiverton Planning Board. And I will start us off with a roll call to establish a quorum. Chris Shriver has a conflict and cannot be with us tonight. Christine Shay, Janice Gomes.
Present.
Rosemary Eva.
Present.
Adam Raposa, Peter Bramante, we haven't heard from him, but he may come in later. And Patricia Hilton.
Present.
So we have a quorum, and I'm Stu Hardy, and I'm present, so we have a quorum tonight. So I'd like to call upon the EcoG Energy applicant, and that's agenda item number one and number two. And I see a few people I know, Michael Shelter, Julia Malloso, I believe. And I don't know you, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Kate Nada, I'm a development manager for EcoG.
Oh, good, yes, you were, I believe you were at the Technical Review Committee meeting, but I was not there, so.
Okay.
I miss. So, Michael, would you like to start out with any background comments? Or we had both you and Julia with us on March 7, 2023, and you did a concept plan review of the project and got some very positive feedback, I believe. And most recently, you all participated in the Technical Review Committee, which I believe was June 22. Do you have any background that you'd like to add?
Yes, so thank you for having us tonight again, Michael Shelter, Project Manager at EcoG Energy. And we're here to discuss our proposed solar system at 590 Fish Road. So just some updates for the board, particularly following our Technical Review Committee meeting on June 22. And I know that we are discussing this later tonight, but it was determined based on the energy that will be generated by the solar system that we will have to submit for a major land development as a principal ground mount energy system, a solar energy system, so we have submitted that application. And I will defer all comments until we discuss that later on on the agenda tonight. We have done a little more layout planning for our tree removal. We understand last time the plans were a little bit confusing. So as of right now, there is only one tree that needs to be removed. And on our plan set, it's right behind you, this, all of this information, we also have consolidated and put into the new application, which Ed Rotella has now. But as of right now, there's only one tree to be removed on the eastern side. And we are currently getting a formal tree inventory for the western side, which I know concern, there are the concerns with, you know, potential issues with the view shed. And that, just because of availability, we unfortunately won't have for another week. We reached out to a few contractors, and as soon as we could get it is next week. So we'll have a final number for you well in advance of the August 1st meeting, but just wanted to let you know that we, as of right now, have identified one singular tree out of the roughly dozen that were identified in the southern and eastern part of the system. Another comment from the Technical Review Committee meeting is I've, EcoG is working with the Tiverton Fire Marshal to develop the appropriate emergency management plan and the appropriate size and placement of all that signage that's needed for the 24-hour emergency response on our behalf and who to notify and everything. We have received a Phase 1 ESA, we just received it today. So I'm just going to go over a quick, quick overview for you. It's also in the next application that you'll be receiving. The, so it was determined that the current use of life rafting survival, so roughly the past 40 years, does not show evidence of contamination on site. However, the company Tectonic that we contracted to perform the ESA requested that we complete a limited Phase 2, as there are historic uses of the property and uses of the abutting properties, that there could be potential contamination. They don't believe there to be, but they want us to complete this next step just to really rule everything out and, you know, make sure everyone feels comfortable and has a green light for the land there. We are planning to finalize our stormwater management plan, soil erosion and sediment control plan, layout and grading plan, and operations and maintenance plan, unless there are any other comments that we should take into consideration. And should we be okay to finalize after tonight? We will have those for you as well, well in advance of our next meeting with you. And we are working on our landscaping plan. We just need that final count of trees to be certain that we are, you know, replacing any we need to take down or, you know, we're planting in the right areas.
Do you want to go through the renderings?
Yes, we have also prepared renderings for all of you. So this is a view from the eastern side of the property looking west. So that tree line is where, you know, those abutting properties fall. This is rendering from inside the tree line, close to the property line or right on the property line of the western side. So where Fish, or 590 Fish Road hits those non-conforming use properties. I know that was brought up at the last meeting. So we wanted to make sure we gave a rough rendering of what the view shed would look like there. And there is a downward slope there. So from our understanding, and we are working with the landscape architect on that, once we have that tree inventory and removal, they'll be able to provide more context. But we don't anticipate there being interrupt, any visual impact on the abutting properties. This is another view, just showing what it looks like from the northwest portion, looking southeast. This is looking south to north, so you can see, you can see 590 Fish Road behind there. You can see that there is a slope to the property that we've identified in our surveys. This is just one other view showing from the southeast corner looking northwest. And that, that is all. So we, I believe we are good right now. Are there any other, we're happy to open up to questions and comments from the board.
As I mentioned at the end of the TRC meeting, are we going to get a survey plan that has the locusts and all the dimensions and the abutters? I mean, we definitely need that.
Yes.
I mean, I think our planner was going to show you some exhibits of what we've had in the past. But, I mean, that's very important. I mean, and I believe Nathan brought on at the meeting too, that there was missing things. And I, after the meeting, I took a ride up, Nathan followed me, and I saw the land. And there are, we need those dimensions.
Yeah.
And the abutters property, the locusts, the zoning, all of that is very important for recording.
Okay, we have included that. Yeah, so we have a boundary and topographic survey that we've included in the new plan set.
Class 1 survey.
Class 1.
I do not believe this has been stamped as a class 1 survey.
Should be.
Let me check, actually, it might have been. Uh, yes, yep, a class 1 survey. So that is included in the most recent plan set package that we have just submitted. So you have not seen it yet, but I am sharing it on the screen here, and you will see it after this meeting.
You did submit a stormwater management plan. Those of us that don't, can't use the electronic because of vision problems. It was very short. The electronic had 67 pages, what we received on the printed copy was maybe 12 or 15 pages.
So the, that full copy included all the HydroCAD data and everything that went to the engineer?
And there's a copy in the planning board office.
Correct, yes, I have given those documents to Ed Rotella, and I can confirm with him to make sure he has them.
For the record.
Yeah, once we, and once we finalize, we will make sure that there are paper copies.
I noticed it was signed and everything, but I just didn't know if I didn't get it.
Okay, yeah, no, no problem, sorry about that confusion. Yeah, we wanted to, we provided all of that information over to the engineer for the review.
And you also mentioned at the TRC that you had something from RITM. Do we have copies of the RITM? We didn't have it, not packets.
So that was via a phone call?
We need that followed up.
Okay.
At RITM, so it goes in the file as well. Because 20 years down the road, if something happens. Thank you.
Yes.
I don't recall what the comment was related to for, with RITM. I'm assuming it's something that will be followed up with, with, an, with a permit.
So we had met with RITM on a video call, and we had shown them our site plan and the stormwater analysis and all of those plans. And it was determined that it, our project actually does not fall under the jurisdiction of them because of the distance from the emerging wetland. So they essentially were suggesting that, you know, we don't submit anything to them because the answer is going to be that there is no significant impact.
So they, they expressed to us that the project does not trigger any of the cases that would normally fall under their jurisdiction. So there is no increase to stormwater flows. The entire ground disturbance is outside of the buffer area of the wetlands. So they basically said, just on that initial review, on that phone call, that they do not have jurisdiction over this type of project because it's not triggering any items that would warrant their jurisdiction. And they had basically said that, given their backlog of work, they basically said, we, you know, don't want you to apply because this is not going to trigger anything.
That's fantastic for them, but that causes a problem for us because without some documentation from them, that they don't have jurisdiction or that it would not trigger something, I'm not sure how we can confirm that.
Mm-hmm. So perhaps we can reach back out to them to get something in, a statement, a statement in writing of that.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I don't care, I don't care if it's an email, I don't care if it's a le, just a brief letter that, you know, captures your conversation with them.
States that. Yep.
We just need something in writing in the file that they, that that's the case so that we can close that chapter.
Absolutely.
Ashley?
Yes?
Will the abutter, being the quarry next door, would that have any environmental significance or any problem?
I, I can't see how we could hold them accountable for anything that the quarry is doing. And, I mean, this is.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was affecting any of the veins geologically or whatever.
Well, again, I, like, we can't hold them.
If they told them.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Raising a question.
Mm-hmm.
So, does anybody else have any questions for Michael or his team? Is, as I understand it, our, our primary task tonight is more of a procedural task than a substantive task. And since you are required to submit both a master plan, application, or a major land development, which would involve a master plan, and you also fall under Article 20 Development Plan Review. I believe that Ashley is, has recommended, and I believe this came up in the TRC meeting, that we, that the planning board consider combining the master plan and preliminary plan phases of the major land development review, and then make, make that concurrent with the preliminary plan review under DPR, Development Plan Review. Did I get that correct, Ashley?
Yes.
So would you like to speak to that, Ashley? And you provided us all with a memo, but just to, for the sake of the audience, it would be nice to give your rationale for that.
So as they mentioned at the TRC, it was, the question was raised about the provision in the solar ordinance that states that in order to be considered an accessory ground mount, you cannot exceed 125% of the energy used by the primary structure on the site. The applicant was going to look into that to determine whether or not they did exceed that or not, understanding that if they do, in fact, exceed that 100, that 125% of the energy used by the primary structure, they cannot be considered an accessory ground mount. They would have to be considered, is it called a?
Grounds.
Primary ground mount, which is permitted to exist on a lot with another primary use. And if you are considered a primary ground mount installation, you have to go through both development plan review and major land development. If you recall, in March, they came before you and did a pre-application for development plan review and for major land development. So they've satisfied the requirement for major land development for a pre-application. And in order to keep everything streamlined and moving, it was my recommendation that the board consider combining master and preliminary into one stage and running the DPR concurrent with that application. So they have submitted, we are reviewing. The, the, the hope is that we can put the, the combined master and preliminary on the August agenda in addition to continuing the development plan review application. But you do need to grant an extension to the DPR timeline. That expires on July 30, and we would do it the same way that we've done it previously, which is to extend the time clock for the development plan review application to run concurrently with the preliminary plan, major land development, so that those things can move together at the same time.
So does everybody understand what Ashley is proposing? Is there any discussion about that?
I have a question for Patricia and Ashley, since I have been involved, and this is the first one of the new ordinance. This is, I'm sorry, this is, you're calling it an accessory, but it's really a direct connect to the grid, correct?
It doesn't have anything to do with.
The word accessory.
But it doesn't, the, the word, the difference between, and correct me if I'm wrong, because you know it better than I do, but the difference between accessory and primary doesn't have anything to do with how the energy is used. It doesn't have to be used on the site, it's all being fed back into the grid.
Okay, but the definition in here says accessory to the building, or something like that I read. And I'm just wondering, is it, it's not accessory?
Well, it's not accessory anyway because it exceeds the 125%, but that's the reason that it's not an accessory. John and I looked at this, there, there is some language difference between the accessory ground mount and the agricultural ground mount, wherein the agricultural ground mount definition, it is clear that the intent of that was for the energy to be used on the site for the purpose of facilitating agricultural operations. There, that language is different in accessory and in primary. It has nothing to do with where the energy is used.
Okay.
That ener, it, it, it can be used on site or it can be fed back into the grid, it doesn't matter. The reason this is not an accessory is because they exceed the 125% of the energy used on the site by the primary structure. So it is considered a, a primary ground mount.
The primary structure would be?
So, so, Rosemary, maybe this will, will help. The reason that an agricultural accessory and a, this straight accessory are different has a lot to do with the location. So keep in mind that these accessories, right, are allowed by, right, in the industrial zone. So think about where they're going, they're going in the industrial zone. And in those cases, first of all, you can have more than one principal use on an industrial site. Our zoning code allows that. So some of these might be going onto a parcel that have multiple buildings with multiple tenants, right? And maybe they all have their own electric meters, or maybe there's only one, and maybe the utilities are included, or maybe they're not because, because maybe there's a landlord who doesn't have a building there that just leases them, right? So when we were doing this in an effort to make it not so complicated, we stuck with just 125% number because some of these parcels might have four different buildings with four different tenants on them, right? You can add it all up to the 125%, but who gets the credit and how that all works starts to get potentially really complicated if it's just getting fed back into the, if, if we required that it, it can only be to, you know, that it's got to power those buildings. Because we wanted to encourage people, if we're going to have these in town, that encouraging them to go to the, the industrial zone was a good thing. So in an effort to make it simpler for a property owner or a landlord, we just said, we're going to stick with 125% number because that's what, that's what National Grid would use for rooftop, right, for accessory. If you're going to run your house, you're going to run a business, you're going to put it on your roof, and you're going to go in that program. That's the number they use, 125%, so we stuck with it. But that's why we stayed away from, does it matter if you're, if you're using the solar power to run the business directly or you're feeding it back into the grid? We don't care, if that makes any sense at all.
It does, thank you, Tricia. Looking at the location of it and all the buildings around there, it was a little confusing.
Thank you both.
So the, so the issue that we need to consider is combining, whether or not we would like to combine, and we need to vote on this, the master plan and the preliminary plan stages of major land development, and then make that concurrent with, with the DPR preliminary plan. And so.
And extend the time clock?
And we need to extend the time clock for DPR as well. And, and we need to ask you to request an extension of the time clock. That's how it's done, and we kind of like that in writing, actually. But you can scribble something, and you've already done that. And our next meeting, and we're hoping, as, as Ashley mentioned, we're hoping to have you back with us, but our next meeting is coming right up. It's, it's August 1. And just in case you're not ready for August 1, would you consider continuing the time clock on Article 20 DPR until sometime in September? Would that make sense?
Can't we do it the same way we've done it before? Didn't we just say that it would be concurrent with the preliminary plan time clock?
Whenever that's done.
Whenever that's done, and that way, those, we don't have to keep worrying about them being separate from each other.
Right. So, well.
Is that your motion, Steve?
So my motion would be then to combine the two master plan stages, the, the two major land development stages, master plan and preliminary plan, and then make that concurrent with the Article 20 Development Plan Review, preliminary plan stage. And I think that's all I really need to say at this point, so that would be my motion. If we can get a second, then we can have an official discussion. So Tricia Hilton has seconded that motion. So now I'm going to open it up to a, a general discussion of the planning board. Does anybody have any questions or comments or concerns? Okay, seeing none, then I'll call the question, all of those in favor. Okay, and I think it is unanimous. Thank you. So, but now, you have already submitted a written request for an extension of the time clock, and what is, and what is the date on the extension?
I don't think you listed a date. They didn't specify.
I think we need to specify that, though, don't we?
An extension of which time clock?
You only need to extend the development plan review time clock.
Exactly.
And what was their request, to have it run concurrent with the preliminary plan?
I think that's what, that, we had asked for. I think that's what I had asked you for, I don't recall looking at it exactly.
I'll double, I'll double check, correct?
Double check or send us a request.
Okay.
For the DPR application to run concurrent with preliminary plan review.
Okay.
Fair?
If you don't think a date is, a specific date is needed.
Sure.
I don't, because your motion was to have it run concurrent.
Okay, so, so in that case, we don't have a specific date. But, but we, but, but we do, but, but, but we will do it concurrently to make the project move ahead. And so, but we now need to have a motion and a vote on accepting the time clock, so.
Can we just do that?
No, I don't think we did.
I thought your motion covered both.
Okay, I, I didn't.
That's what I wrote, I wrote, the motion was to.
Combine master and preliminary, and to have the DPR time clock run concurrently with the master, with the preliminary plan, major land.
I was going to split out the time clock, but since that's Ed's interpretation, I will accept Ed's interpretation to move the process forward. And so, so, so I guess we've done that.
Can I ask just two matters to make sure we're on the same page? For that request in writing, would you like that to be dated as of today so that it matches with the meeting at which that was just voted on? Given that we'll probably get to that tomorrow when we're in the office.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I did want to ask, I mean, our plan is to return to the August 1st meeting if there is that agenda available to us. So I know the time clock is probably longer than that, but we would like to return on August 1.
It, I have to review the application that you just submitted and certify it complete in order to put it on that August agenda, so I will be doing that probably early next week.
So we might run into an issue with advertising.
What is the deadline?
We have August 1st meeting, so.
Because I think we discussed this last time.
Yeah, so the August 1st meeting, our deadline is actually tomorrow.
Then I will be reviewing it tomorrow.
Thank you, Ashley.
Because they only run advertisements once a week, so we have to get it in for Thursday.
Yeah, um, okay.
Or you can just wait until September. Make sure, I know you want to push it forward.
We would prefer to push it forward at August 1 if that is possible. We had understood that as long as we had brought that application to you today, that that would work with the deadline.
The problem is, it gives me no time to review and certify it. I mean, the, the only other option is to just advertise it. If for some reason it's not complete, it would have to be continued.
Yeah, and the board has to review it, too.
Well, you're going to get it, you're going to get it prior to the August 1st meeting, just like you would for any other packet of information. The problem is, is that I have one day, basic, less than one day, to review the application to certify it complete in order to put it on an agenda. So the only, there's only two ways to handle this. One is that I have to re, what's, when do you have to have it to the paper?
Tomorrow.
I know tomorrow, but tomorrow at 9:00 AM or tomorrow at 3:00 makes a difference.
So, yeah, so in order, so in order to get it in on time, I'd have to get it out to them tomorrow.
But what's on?
But, I mean, usually they like it before, like, you know, 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay.
It'll be like, somewhere, so morning would be preferable, like 11, 12.
All right.
But depending, but I can also, so there's another option, another paper, I can run it out, and that would give you more time to review it.
But it's more expensive.
It's much more money. Yeah, okay, it's okay.
What's the deadline for the second paper?
The deadline for the second paper would be next week, it would be Monday.
Are you agreeable to the extra fee for this alternative paper?
Likely, what, do we know what the fee is?
I don't know what the fee is, but like, it'd be.
What's the difference, approximately?
So if, if one would be like $80, the other, the other advertiser would be like $240, so.
So you're talking about 200, 200 bucks?
That's acceptable.
That's fine, thank you, I appreciate that immensely.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are the dates of the papers?
What's just the other paper, Ed?
So we have the Econ Times, and then we have the Newport Daily. So we have the Connaught Times, and then we have the Newport Daily. The Connaught Times is the one that runs once a week that is cheaper.
Yeah, yeah.
So the Newport Daily gives you more time, but it costs more money?
Costs more money, right.
Of local circulation, sort of.
Right, no, it meets all the requirements, it's just not the paper we traditionally use.
That's fine, that's fine, thank you. That's fine, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
All right, my, I will review it this week. That way, if there, you're missing anything, or we need to re- we'll, we'll take care of it, and that way we'll still have a little bit of time to get to the paper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions or comments? Well, well, we have the team here. Nope, not seeing any. Thank you very much, and we hope to see you back August first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is a request for return of escrow funds for East Coast Construction, and that's a very small amount, it's in the amount of one thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars. And this is concerning a project at sixteen thirty-one Fish Road. We discussed this at our last meeting, and Rick Rogers, who was, who was joined us, our DPW Director, suggested that we withhold, that we refrain from returning the escrow until one or two quick questions were answered by East Coast Construction concerning water runoff, correct, Rick?
Thank you, Stu. I did meet with the East Coast representative, and they are going to do some mitigation work to improve the drainage, and they'll let me know when that's done. I'll inspect it, and then we'll, you know, send an email or a letter to Ashley and Ed so that you're aware.
Excuse me, Rick, did you also ask about the fencing, the embankment in the back there?
No, that's a separate lot.
It is, okay.
So, uh, would you like us to put this on the August first agenda? Do you think it'll be? I suppose we could do that, and then just, uh, just, uh, carry it forward if they haven't done the, um, work.
That makes sense to me, Stu.
Okay, so, it sounds good, okay.
Thank you.
Want me to continue?
So let's have a motion to continue this item to August one, twenty twenty-three. I'll make that motion. Oh.
So moved.
So moved. Then I'll second it. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all of those in favor? I believe it's unanimous. Thank you. And so the next one, and Rick has left us, but we do have an email from Rick on this one.
He's still here.
Oh, he is, okay. This is, uh, Agenda Item Three B, Request of Return Escrow for Laureano Costa. And this is the subdivision we did at nine eleven Fish Road, near, near the corner of Souza and Fish. And again, this is a very small amount, less than a thousand dollars. And we do have an email from Rick saying he has no problem with it.
Yes, thank you, Stu.
But you, you heard it from the man himself.
Are there permanent bounds put in there? I, I had someone tell me permanent bounds haven't been being put in on subdivisions, so I wondered.
I do not know that one way or the other, but that's not, I, I would recommend that just as a, as an engineer, but it's not under my purview.
Yeah, I think we have to be cognizant of that in the future.
Yeah. So that, that would fall under the tax successor, probably?
No, it's construction. Permanent bounds are put, put in when you subdivide the boundaries, you know? If you've got two lots, you have a permanent bound, so they can't move it.
I, I would think it would fall under the purview of the planning board to make that a requirement, if you so choose to do so. But it does make a lot of sense, as Rosemary's saying, is when you have a plan coming before the planning board, especially if you're creating or subdividing, et cetera, that you put in, uh, bounds, at least.
We did pass the...
It is a, it is a requirement.
It is a requirement someplace, it's, it's...
It's in the checklist.
Yeah, but we haven't gone out and looked, because there's a couple that I was told were put in.
So that becomes a, an enforcement of an approved plan?
The ASB.
Yeah, i- is there a requirement in this case for an ASB?
No, I don't think so.
No.
Was it, was it stated as a requirement for bounds to be installed?
It's, it's on the, it's on the checklist, and so they show them on the site plans, which gets approved and recorded, which...
Oh, you mean bounds to be installed?
They show them as permanent bound markers on the site plans, and those final plans get approved.
And recorded.
And recorded, which is the, that's the document you would go back to, to enforce if they're not installed. I don't know what the recourse is, but...
So that would be the building official, wouldn't it?
Hmm, I, I think no.
I think it's planning.
Yeah.
But it would be the AO.
I mean, if you don't, if, if something is not built as it is approved on a site plan that has been approved by the planning board, I believe that it isn't, it's the administrative officer. I believe, I'm waiting for you to tell me otherwise.
I agree with you, Ashley, but I don't know what enforcement authority you have other than to require them to come back to the board.
I don't, I probably don't have it. I mean, what would I do anyway? I mean, what, I'm gonna yell at them and tell them they didn't install them?
Could file, could you?
I have no fining authority, to my, as, as far as I know.
No, you don't.
I don't even know that the planning board has the authority to fine anybody.
No.
He, the, the building official doesn't have authority over the subdivision regulations, which is where the, that requirement lives.
He has enforcement authority.
Over subdivision? Let us look into it.
Has anybody reached out to the applicant to see if they fulfilled their obligation as shown on their proposed plan that was approved by the planning board?
No, I didn't know this was an, an issue until just now. So let Todd and I look into it and see, we can come back to you with more information.
Thank you.
So, um, are you recommending, Rosemary, that we not vote on returning the escrow? No, okay, so we, we can, we can go ahead and vote on returning the escrow, but you will also, but Ashley and Todd will also follow up on the issue of, of, of the markers?
It, it, not that it was asked, but I'm happy to assist Ashley, Ed, John, whoever, by walking around, holding a tape measure, see if the bounds are installed.
Yeah, I think it, let, let Todd and I figure out what the mechanism is first, and then I think regardless of who is, who has the authority, it would be helpful to have your participation in that effort.
Just, just let me know when, Ashley.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I believe that our job is to simply recommend to the treasurer that the, that the escrow be returned, and indicate to the treasurer that all of the work has been completed to the satisfaction of, of the Director of DPW. Uh, so I would make that motion. Do we have a second on that? Oh, did Adam second it?
Hi, Tricia.
Oh, Tricia, okay. So I made a motion, Tricia seconded that motion, to recommend to the treasurer that the escrow be returned because all of the outstanding requirements have been met to the satisfaction of DPW. So I will, uh, call the question then, since I am hearing no comments or questions from the board. All of those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. So this brings us to the approval of minutes for June sixth, twenty twenty-three. Does anybody have, um, any, um, issues that they have caught that need to be corrected in the minutes? I, I, I did, I did proofread these minutes, and I didn't see, and I, and I passed on like comments, but there were only a, a few little items that I caught. So Ed did an excellent job on the minutes. Has anybody, would anybody like to come up with any further corrections, or?
I have a couple suggestions.
Sure.
Page four, in the second line, Mr. Thompson, I would put Mr. Bruce Thompson in there at the beginning.
Four, second line.
Fifteen ankle parcel would today include Mr. Bruce Thompson's parcel. He's the guy that recommended, requested the abandonment. I mean, it's mentioned down below, but I put it up ahead.
Okay.
And the other thing, um, above that, Mr. Mr. Hardy made a motion to continue the hearing. It wasn't a hearing, uh, in that case, it was an item. Just change hearing to item. That was the request for the escrow for East Coast.
Yeah, it's an agenda item.
Yeah, just an item, just instead of hearing, item.
Yeah, that's a good catch. Thank you.
And, um, and I, I got an apostrophe here somewhere.
So it was the, um, which one was that?
I gotta find it, Stu. The last page, Ed.
The, uh, the previous one, there, the, the escrow, the ECC, which item was that?
Um, that, that's on page four, and that's the third paragraph on page four. Mr. Hardy made a motion to continue the item.
Thank you.
Okay, that was under A. On the last page, um, we need an apostrophe S on the suite's update on the subdivision regulations.
Apostrophe. That's a good question.
Which page is that?
That's the last page, Ed.
Page six, and, and it's the first sentence under J.
And, and I'd like to make a suggestion or a reminder. Get rid of the draft when you post it to the Secretary.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we, it, does anybody else have any corrections or anything that needs to be done? Um, then I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the June sixth meeting with the corrections that, or with the recor- with the improvements, the amendments that Rosemary has suggested. Do we, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Um, Janice seconds that. Any discussion, hearing, no discussion, those in favor? It's, once again, you're not voting, Christine, you weren't there. You weren't there, so you can't... And Adam wasn't there. But let's see if we have enough votes to do it, because we only have...
Majority.
One, two, three. We have a majority of those present, so I believe it carries. Good. Thank you, Ed, good job.
Thank you.
Can Nathan go?
Yes, absolutely, sorry, sorry, Nathan, I, I, I wasn't in.
On the projects, I do have a couple. Nathan may want to hear a couple of things on the projects. If we make, move them on water.
Yeah, what, what projects you're talking about? What is the agenda item?
G, status of the projects.
Oh, okay, then I would make a motion to, uh, move our agenda out of order to bring G, uh, to, uh, the very next, um, item to discuss.
I don't know.
And we have a second from, um, Tricia. Those in favor? Um, unanimous. So now, now we are... So now we're doing three G, which is called Planning Office Projects, Status Sheet, and Office Updates. And, um, so, uh, so I'll call on Ashley to introduce this agenda item.
So this is just the, the update, recent updates to applications. Rosemary, you said you had questions?
I have questions on the status of some of the projects that we've approved, and I don't know if Nathan's been out and checked them, or he's doing it, Rick's looked at it. Advantage Storage and Brayton Solar, Amararesco, the cemetery thing, and, um, permanent, I just mentioned the permanent bounds must be installed, but those are... Does anybody know anything about these? I mean, there's a lot of construction going on up at the industrial park.
Yes, there is.
And I just wondered if who's reviewing it.
Bills, sales, and the, uh, advantage storage, self-storage.
Sales looks pretty good, but it's, there's a lot of construction with advantage.
Yeah, I, I haven't.
Normally...
Actually, I'm not familiar with those applications.
Because they're, they're really, they got all kinds of portage ons going on and everything else up there.
You don't have to talk to Ashley about, you know, site visits and things like that.
Yeah, in the past, dear engineering used to go out and check the progress, you know, what was going on. And, um, I was up at the recycle place the other day, and I saw all of this. So it's right on the corner, going into the industrial park.
Why don't you, anyone who has a particular site that they want visited that we need to follow up on, just shoot me an email and tell me what the property is, and Nathan and I will coordinate, and we'll make sure that he has a set of plans from what was approved, and we can organize a couple hours where we just run through...
Yeah, I can, if you request me to, you know, check something, or to have someone from our company check something, I can, I haven't been just doing site visits, you know?
Right, because the other engineer, you know, the other engineer that we had would, you know, check on the process. I know that you, they moved the, the, I think it was in one of the reports that you gave us, they had to move the line or something up there, there was a problem with the ledge.
Yes, they moved the building.
That was advantage.
That was advantage storage, they moved the building.
All right, but...
And we approved that.
It was approved as a minor amendment administering, right? Administered, yeah.
But I mean, I, I, you know, and the thing with Brayton Solar, I mean, the road's been, Brayton Road has been closed this week. What's the pro- process? Anybody know anything about it? I believe the houses is there, and the decision, it said the houses was supposed to go.
Brayton Solar? Am I correct that they're paving that road to, for the interconnection?
Yes.
Yeah.
Taking it up to put the, the lines around.
They put the pole boxes in, and they're, they're probably putting in the duckbacks.
Right, that's what I thought, so Nathan's stopping to check on the DOT work.
Am I right? What was the particular question?
Rosemary, are you asking Nathan to go out there and check?
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay.
I just asked him to stick around in case we had, he had to...
No, but as to Brayton Solar project, are you asking him to go out and check on the road?
I'm just see if everything's up to snuff.
But it, if it's not, is it a town road?
It's, it's, it's the, the solar project itself, what's going on inside.
Okay, so I think the best way to handle this, because these are projects that straddle approvals that Nathan was not here for, and some of them I was not here for, is for anyone who has a specific project of concern, get me that project. We'll pull the file, we'll pull the, we'll look at the final plans, and then Nathan and I will assess, you know?
And the decisions.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm just bringing it up, seeing...
No, I'm not, I, I think that's, that's fine, that just because this straddles Nathan being here and me being here, these are projects that we're not necessarily aware of.
Right.
You are aware of them because you sat as the board that approved them. So just let us know which ones they are, and we'll...
And Rick is aware of them, too, because he was here, so, yeah.
Yep.
Appreciate it. And the Amararesco thing, that's been an ongoing thing with access to a cemetery up there.
Okay.
And it's in, um, the solar project over on Crandall Road. I can't, what's the name of it?
Wainover?
Wainover.
Wainover. Thank you.
Although, isn't the access, I mean, without due, and I understand what you're saying, Rosemary, but isn't that, isn't that issue in the purview of the Historical Cemetery Commission?
It's in the purview of the decision that we made.
Right, but, but the access was for members of the Historical Cemetery Com- Commission to be able to maintain that historical cemetery, it's correct.
Correct, and we haven't been able to do that.
And so if they haven't been able to do that, then...
But that needs to be brought to our, our attention.
Right.
Right, but, 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 but that, what I'm saying is that that, that commission should be the one bringing that to attention.
Yeah, they should let us know that they're having a problem, and that the site plan is not being enforced.
From J. J. is our liaison and he's the one that wrote the memo because we went, we, we've asked specifically and we asked Mr. Carter and nothing happened. So now, since he is our liaison, he took it upon himself to bring it to your attention. Because we've been, we've been struggling with this. We've been hopping the wall to clear that cemetery and put the flag up and everything.
So we all received a memo.
Yes.
From, from J. Edwards.
Correct. As our liaison.
Bringing, calling our attention to the problem. Has it gone before town council, do you know?
No.
So.
Has it?
I don't know.
I would just want, bring it to everybody's attention again, revisit it, just transparency.
Yeah.
Not to.
Because we've asked for years, since they did that.
Yeah.
Years, we're still hopping the wall to clear that cemetery.
But I don't believe it was ever put in the final plan decision. It was.
To put the, to put the cedar fence up, yes, and to allow us access.
Was that, that was actually put in the final plan decision? So then that needs to be enforced. I don't know who enforces that, Ashley, maybe that's something you can also look into.
Thank you.
So can, can I suggest that we put that on our agenda as a little agenda item, just to follow up on that in August to see, to see where we stand? It may, I'm not sure that.
Wingover Cemetery Discussion.
Emmeresco. We go then slash Emmeresco, something to get it out there.
Yeah, just, 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 you know, just to keep it on our agenda to see what, what our options might be. Because if it is in the final plan, the, the written plan, final plan, then it is enforceable, I believe, if it's in there.
So Ed, specifically give notice to Wingover. What's the Emmeresco issue, Rosemary?
They promised to erect a fence and they promised to allow.
Emmeresco and Wingover are the same?
Yes.
I'm sorry, okay. All right, it sounded like they were two different ones when you itemized them.
Yeah.
The property is called Wingover, but the company.
It's Emmeresco.
Emmeresco Board.
Whomever's involved with the Wingover project.
Right.
Specific notice, okay? Just a letter that this matter will be on the agenda, August 1st.
There should be a point of contact in the file.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, excellent.
Are there any other specific ones that you want to tell me now that you want us to follow up on?
I can't think of any. I thought of those coming up here.
I can't think of any.
Advantage Storage, right?
Yep. The status of, you know, making sure that they're doing everything up to code it, et cetera.
And then what was the other Sola one?
Brayton.
Brayton-Sola, what's the status?
Okay, but you just want status on those last two.
Yeah, I want to know.
Status from the town.
Yep.
And then when we're looking at permanent bounds, how far are we going back on not being installed?
I'll talk to you later.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd just like to say, Rosemary, well, I, I agree in principle, we should have a process for all of these at the same time. I am a little cognizant of having Ashley and Nathan given everything else that's going on in the limited amount of time that we have with them. You know, going too far back, I mean, we could go back on bounds like, you know, 300 years. So, and, and, you know, a little bit the same with some of these projects that might look, I mean, I understand that they probably have, as you mentioned, that there are porta potties there. Well, it's a construction site, so that doesn't really surprise me or, like, to be honest, alarm me very much as an issue. So I, I think it's good, but I think we shouldn't, you know, necessarily default to having every single, having Nathan inspect every single project unless we can look at something and say, you know, that really doesn't seem right or that, I, I don't remember that from the plan. Things like porta potties on a construction site just don't.
Yeah, that's an ocean requirement.
No, I, well, I know, but like, it might be in jest, but if there isn't something we can say that is specifically alarming us about it, like gee, there's an awful lot of stormwater runoff or, you know, I, I don't remember, it looks like the fence isn't in the right place or, or something, that we should maybe try and look for, for something, a specific something that looks out of order. Because, you know, we only have so much of Ashley's time and there's so much else to do. And, you know, the same with, with Nathan, so I just want to be a little cognizant of, of that.
Okay, thank, thank you, I agree with that. But I have a question for Ashley. What is the project at, at 1588 Bulgamarch Road?
It's an administrative subdivision, that's the administrative subdivision.
Yeah, administrative subdivision.
It's an administrative.
So you're just moving a lot line or, or merging two lots into a single lot. Okay, that's fine.
Theoretically.
Good luck, I, I just.
It's been certified incomplete, so.
But that's, we don't have too many projects going on right now, but that project that you mentioned, do, on off of Souza Road.
Right, on the, on the McGinnis property, the 44 acres on the, on the south side of Souza.
They have not.
They have not submitted anything, so, so there's nothing to report. Okay. And, 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 and nothing with respect, I keep getting, people keep asking me questions about the Clearcut property at Main Road at the corner of, up in North Tiberian, at the corner of Main and, what is that?
Nothing.
Borden.
No, no, nothing. Oh, no, I know exactly, yeah.
Next to Family Tots.
Yeah.
Next to Family Tots.
It's cleared, that's, but nothing.
So they haven't come in with anything, okay, that's fine.
But there is one other thing I have to bring up and that's the November 7 meeting. We're gonna have to move the date of that meeting. That's election day. So we have to come up with a plan, I think we can just.
Why is there an election this year?
Special elections, first to Congress.
Oh, yes, of course. Okay.
So we can put that on the, on the August agenda for you to confirm moving that to the second Tuesday.
To the second Tuesday, right, and, and we, I think we, we've, okay, good, yes, put that on the agenda. Let's put that on the agenda for August and we'll set a date. And, and Ed, if, if I may, you might want to inquire if this, if this room is available on the second Tuesday of November.
Yeah, I, I.
If you can do that, we can, and then you can lock that in, you know, good, excellent, thank you. Thank you for catching that. I, I didn't even realize it was an election coming. Okay, so is that all we have now for this agenda item three G, which is Planning Office Project Status Sheet? Does anybody have any, any questions or for Ashley or Ed? No? So I, I think we're fine, so Nathan, I think you can go home now. Nathan has to go all the way to Plymouth. Yes, I am. Thank you so much for coming. So now we will go back to our, we'll go back to three D, Update of Subdivision Regulations. And the action here is Update from Administrative Officer and Subcommittee, Discussion and Vote on Adding and Appointing Members to Subcommittee. And this was on our agenda back in June and all we did is, is create a little, a little subcommittee made up of myself and I volunteered Christine. And Christine is not going to be able to be with us for much longer because of a work conflict. But, so why is this on the agenda? I'm not quite sure.
Because once Christine is not available, it's a committee of one, and my thinking was if you, how many can they put on a subcommittee for? So my thinking is to have a subcommittee of four, so that if somebody can't come or whatever, we still have a core group of people that can meet, you know, somewhat regularly to move, move the subdivision piece of this forward.
Okay, so are there any volunteers to serve on that subcommittee?
This is.
What agenda now are we on?
We're.
Three D.
D.
Which committee is this?
This is for, so the agreement, I brought this issue to you and said we're, you're, the town council appointed a zoning committee to do the zoning, but the subdivision lies with the planning board. So how do you want to handle the planning board working through subdivision updates? And the, the discussion was that you would appoint a subcommittee. A subcommittee of two was appointed. One of those members is not going to be continuing their seat and that will then become a subcommittee of one, so we kind of need to reassess that. And my recommendation to you is if you can appoint four, appoint four, and if someone can't be there or someone else doesn't, you know, re-up their seat, we don't lose the whole subcommittee and end up with not enough people to continue to work.
What's the meeting schedule?
There isn't one. We haven't had a meeting because we just did this.
What will it be? How do you, what's the plan? So do you just use it as needed or is it?
Well, it's.
We do it monthly, right?
We could do a monthly, we could do whatever the committee determines is the best schedule for the members of the committee.
Right.
Um, the other, the concern is that if we keep this at the whole planning board, you're either gonna have to do this at a regular meeting, which you will not always have the time for. I mean, this, this type of meeting that we're having tonight is relatively unusual.
Yes.
Or you hold a regular second meeting a month that's dedicated to the subdivision updates. The other alternative is to set aside a couple of people that are willing to commit some extra time, work through sections of the subdivision regulations as that smaller group and bring those back to the full planning board.
Right, but, but the bulk of the, the, the heavy lifting will be done by Weston and Sampson.
Yes.
They're getting paid for that. So our job is to basically serve as liaison between the planning board and Weston and Sampson to, and to, and to make sure that the lines of communication between the planning board and Weston and Sampson stay open.
Well, what, I mean, I'd really like the subcommittee to serve the purpose of draft, you know, Weston and Sampson will draft section by section updates, bring those updates in pieces to the subcommittee. The subcommittee will review them, they will respond, and then we can move those forward to the full board for an overview. And I'd like to do it in a way where the subcommittee might review three sections. Those changes that the subcommittee requests get incorporated and that gets packaged together and brought to the planning board for review so that we can keep adding to the pieces of the subdivision regulations that have been reviewed by the subcommittee, amended by the subcommittee. And then we end up with a whole set of subdivision regulations that eventually comes before the board as a whole package that you hold a public hearing and then you adopt.
But, but, but when that, when that package gets presented to the planning board, it's not going to be a surprise.
No, you will have seen it in pieces, yes.
We have been looking at it in peace, in pieces and discussing it.
Yes.
So that's an excellent plan and we agreed to that at our last meeting. So I don't think we need to revisit whether or not to have a subcommittee. We only need to ask if there are, if anybody other than myself are willing to serve on that subcommittee, up to three other people. If, if you're not willing to make a commitment now, please think about it seriously and let's keep this on the agenda and bring it back on eight, on August 1st.
So you want, you want four people in total?
Yeah.
And Ashley, are you gonna chair these meetings or will, or will you be with us for these meetings?
Yes, yes.
So to, to Adam's point then, is it more likely that we'd meet during the day, you'd meet during the day rather than come back?
I'll do whatever the, whatever the preference is. If we can meet during the day, that's great. If we can't, because that doesn't work for the people who have volunteered, then we don't.
So not that I'm dying to volunteer or anything else, because I'm really not, but to be a good camper, I will put my name in.
Thank you. And thank, and thank you, Rosemary, so we're up to three people. But let's ask again on August 1st.
Sure.
Because we're, we're missing Peter and Chris and.
And if Peter or Chris want my spot, they are.
You know, and I, this is on the agenda under another topic, but the whole, the whole thing is complicated by the fact that we have amendments that are mandatory by state law that really kind of trump the other.
Sure.
Work that we're looking at doing, so we're gonna have to figure out how to organize that a little bit.
Right, 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 okay, excellent, and we'll, we'll, we will, we will revisit the, but now we have three volunteers to serve on that subcommittee. And we will revisit again August 1st so that for the benefit of Peter and Chris in particular. And anybody else, like, anybody else who may change their mind? Good, okay, so let's go on to agenda item three E, which is Technical Review Committee Policies and Procedures, Discussion and Vote. And again, this is an Ashley initiative. We did discuss this briefly at one of our recent meetings and I remember saying I had no objection to a permanent TRC, but that it would have to be properly structured. So Ashley, do you have recommendations?
Yeah, and I apologize, I, that you're just getting this now, so we can just initiate this conversation, but I've got a document that Ed handed out here that is a draft.
So this document.
Yep, Technical Review Committee Policies and Procedures. It's basically, it's, you know, modeled, somewhat modeled after the planning board policies and procedures, but is specific to the technical review committee. Understanding that you're just, you're just getting this. Certainly if there are initial questions that I can answer, and I would just ask that we put this on the August agenda, that you have the time to go through this. I, I initially drafted this, Todd has reviewed it, his comments have been incorporated. I think it's important that this get established so that we can have a standing TRC membership and meeting time and date so that we can not have to worry about the planning board creating that every time it's needed. But I will say that it is almost certain that this document will end up having to change once we figure out how to address the state law, the new state law requirements. Because I think the technical review committee will become, will play a larger role in development review and so we will need to incorporate that into this document. But I, I would not recommend waiting necessarily to adopt this. I think you can adopt this or however we amend it, we can operate under these procedures and policies until January 1, when we have to figure out how to change all of that again.
It's a good foundation for the future changes.
Okay, so all you're suggesting now, Ashley, is that we put this on the August 1st agenda.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, please read over what Ashley has provided to see, to see if it. So what we're doing now, keeping in mind that the planning board never did establish under, under state law and regulations, a technical review committee. We actually don't have such a thing. Instead, they went with an informal ad hoc TRC. And so now we're being asked to have a regular standing TRC so that we don't have to do appointments all the time. But the devil is always in the detail, so please go through Ashley's recommended policies and procedures.
I can send out the document electronically so you can have, have it electronically.
That would be, that would be excellent because some people prefer that.
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you, Ashley, for, for that initiative. Could be helpful. Okay, so I think that brings us, unless there are any further comments or questions on, on three E, that brings us to three F, Planning Board Policies and Procedures. Revised Timeframes for Submission of Applications and Certification of Applications. Discussion and Vote. And Ashley, I believe again, this is driven by changes in, in state law. And as a municipality of the state, we are required to abide by the state standard.
So there is no, this is driven by me. There is no state standard for deadlines for application submissions. The, the issue that we keep running into here is that in the Planning Board Rules and Procedures, it states that the submission deadline is 21 days prior to a meeting. And so there are times when that causes an issue because I have 25 days to certify an application. So I can't, sometimes can't get a review, an application certified in that 21 days and still have time for advertising. So the, the problem is, is there is a, there is a general assumption that if I submit by this deadline, I'm on that agenda. And that is not always the case because there is not enough time for me to certify the application. Sometimes there's not enough time to advertise the application. So Ed and I have been looking at advertising deadlines and trying to back up from an advertising deadline. And I can't, we can't change what's written in the, the rules and procedures. You all have to change that. So we gave you a piece of paper as an example showing you what we, what we've talked about and kind of what we're thinking. And so there, there are no, there are no standards, there are no requirements in state law that dictate how this gets done. It's really at the, it's at the decision of the planning board itself. So I don't want to penalize an applicant who doesn't have to have, who doesn't have an advertising deadline. So we're kind of doing this in, or suggesting that maybe we do this in two tiers. Maybe the applications that require newspaper advertisement and notice have a longer lead time in terms of submitting an application because we need to account not just for certifying the application, but also for making sure that we can meet an advertising deadline. And then the applications that do not require advertisement and notice, such as a, you know, two lot frontage subdivision, could have a shorter lead time for submitting an application. We're also trying to make it very clear that just because you submit before a deadline does not guarantee you a place on an agenda. There are things that have to happen between the time you certify or between the time you submit and the time that you actually get yourself on an application. So we're trying to make this as clear as possible by not just putting it in your rules and procedures, but putting it on the website. It, putting, it was on the front door. We've taken it off because we're working on changing it. But I wanted to bring this to you for discussion. This is a suggestion. Certainly willing, you know, willing to hear people's thoughts on how to do this better. But 21 days is just often not enough. Sometimes it doesn't even cover the time that I have to review and certify.
Will this also help us get the package a more timely fashion?
Yes, yes. Yes, that, that is also the intent here, is to make sure that there is enough time that I can receive the application, I can review the application, I can certify it. We can, I can draft the memo for you, I can get it out to you. The, the further in advance we receive it, the more time we have to do all of that processing to get it out to you in advance of a meeting. So that, that is another intent.
Okay, so, so we, we, we just received this tonight.
Yes. So.
And I don't know if anybody has had a chance to actually look in our Planning Board Policies and Procedures document. But there's a section called Section Five, Application Review. And that's where I believe Ashley would like an amendment. But I think people need to see, does everybody have this document? Planning Board Policies and Procedures.
It's not just Section Fives too, it's also.
It's in, it's in other sections. So what I, what I'm thinking here is that if we can agree on a submission, or if it's a tiered submission deadline, whether it's just a straight submission deadline, if we can kind of agree on the premise that I need enough time to certify it, I need enough time to draft the memo, I need enough time to get it out to you, and we can come to an agreement on what that timeframe is, then I will take that document and I will show you a track changed version.
Yes, you're right.
Inserting that language into it. And then we would take, basically take this draft, we would extend it out for the year.
Right.
That would get posted on the door, it'll get posted on the website. I just need from you direction in terms of what you are comfortable with in terms of how many days are we going to go before an agenda to, and feel comfortable?
So, so just a little bit of background. Because I was around when we did adopt the language for 21 days. We adopted that language when Sue Gill was volunteering as our AO because applications were coming in a week before the meeting, 10 days before the meeting. And Sue didn't have enough, you know, she was just a volunteer. She was here like what, three days? She was here just about every day, come to think of it. But, and, and some applications were coming in like three, three or four days before, and expected to be on the meeting, you know, on the meeting in three or four days. It was crazy. So, but, but Ashley is not suggesting that we go back to those bad old days. She's actually suggesting that we make the time, the time requirement even longer. And if we can do that under state law, state law, not be inconsistent with anything the state is doing. I thought they did have some regulations on, on this.
The only, the only.
I, I'm entirely in favor of that. And, and, but I think that we need to distinguish between the more complicated applications that require more time for the AO to, to certify complete. And, and those that would also require advertising versus the much, much more simple applications for two lot subdivision
Right.
that don't require an advertising. So let's make a distinction there. And that, that would only be fair to the applicant because then an applicant is coming in for something really clean and simple, doesn't get caught up in a longer timeframe.
So the, the timeframe to certify applications complete is tied to whether or not you have to notice and advertise. So for a minor subdivision that does not create a street, I have 15 days. That's a relatively clean, usually, you know, clean application. Most of the time they're fairly simple. I would recommend, or what we're recommending here is that those have to be submitted, I think we went with five weeks, prior to an agenda in order to be considered for placement on that agenda. Applications that require notice and advertising are going to be minor subdivisions with a street creation or major applications, master and preliminary, in which I have 25 days. We're suggesting for those applications, seven weeks prior to an agenda. And I understand that there are going to be applicants that are not going to like this. But the reality of it is that if you submit seven weeks prior and I have 25 days, we're still within a window where I can certify you incomplete and you could return to me with completed items and I could still get you on that agenda. Whereas now, I, there's no way that's happening. So if you get certified incomplete, you're not getting on the next agenda because we have no time for you to resubmit and get recertified. So it really does benefit the applicant to have this much lead time because it gives us the ability to get completed applications on an agenda. But there is nothing in state law that requires you to set your submission deadlines at any particular time. It's just the certification. So once that application comes in the door, that time clock starts for me to certify that application. Once I certify that application, your time clock to make a decision starts ticking. So that's kind of the rationale behind what we've come up with. I mean, realistically, would I like to push these out a little bit further? Yes, but I'm trying to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, applicants want to get on agendas. I feel like the five week and seven week give us a, a better cushion. They give us better timeframes to work within and they'll get us better products. And we will not create circumstances where we're squeezing applications in between one agenda and the other, trying to get completed applications and having people submit things, you know, a day before they have to go out in your packet in order to get, to get to you in time.
Right. A quick question. How, how well the legal councils who represent applicants and the civil engineers who work for applicants, those are the two key professionals that would need to be made aware of this. So, because people will be, people will be looking at an older version of our policies and procedures and they need to be made aware. If we do change this, and I'm, and I hope we do, they need to be made aware of it. So that when, when an applicant contacts a legal counsel or a civil engineer, you know, they can, they'll be told what the, what the timeframe is. So this is something that we, I guess we just hope that word gets spread around.
Yeah.
It'll take one time, Stu. They're going to learn.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll post it.
They'll, they'll not be happy campers the one time they make the mistake, you know, and, and learn it. You know, I'm just a little concerned about that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there's some responsibility on, on the part of the engineers and the, the lawyers to make sure that they're up to date on, you know, if we post it on the town's website and we post it on the door, you know, I'm not sure what else we can do. There is some responsibility on the part of the.
We would want to post it on our, on our, on our website. And, and physical posting on the door would help because then that would at least protect staff from getting yelled at.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we did have one up there, but, and I, I just went ahead and changed all the dates and then realized that I can't do that because it's actually in that document. So we took that down and are now trying to, you know, make sure we do it the correct way. You will have to vote to amend that document. And as I said, once we have an agreement and everyone feels comfortable with what those times are, I will track change that document and bring it back to you for consideration and approval.
Yeah, okay, so this is going to take a couple of meetings to, to work through.
I would love for you to tell me that you either like this or don't like this and what the, you, what you would like it to be. And then I can track change that and bring it back to you. If that's not, if that's not possible right now, that's okay too. We can hopefully get it done for September. Although I will say, in January, it's all going to change anyway, so.
Well, I, I will say that I like it quite a bit. And I prefer, I prefer for people dates rather than 21 days because I don't even know if most people stop to think, are those business days or actual days? So I like days because I think that that's helpful for everybody. I would say go give yourself as much time as you think you need because I think it is better for the applicant. And, and I would actually not do a tiered system. And I wouldn't because I think that in some cases, you're more likely with the smaller projects that might be not have an engineer or might not have a lawyer guiding them, that those are folks that are going to have to come back to the drawing board a couple of times before they get all their stuff in. So they might actually benefit from a longer timeframe because they, you know, don't completely understand the checklist or they missed something or they didn't think they needed that. And I think it's just kind of simple and I'm not sure that there's a huge difference between five weeks and seven weeks. To tell you the truth, I don't think that that buys, you know, the applicant anything other than enough time to get their ducks in a row. And I would certainly appreciate as a planning board member, getting everything certified, one version, last submission, not, you know, the day before the meeting, getting an amended submission.
Yep.
Which is what happens all the time now. And having those things available to review with plenty of time. I would really appreciate that. And I think for applicants having a date and whether they realize it or not, the benefit of giving you time to help them help themselves is an advantage.
So I think what we can do is definitely put, do it this way that gets posted with a date for the, for each year. You know, every month it'll have, will show you. In that document, we're going to have to pick the number of days.
It's going to change from year to year.
Right, so we can't put the dates in there, but we can put the dates in here. We can even put language in there that says, January 1 of every year, there will be a, a schedule created and posted so that we make sure that, you know, when we're all gone, that continues to, to happen. And that there's, every year, there's a posted submission schedule.
Yep, I, I completely agree. I like the dates.
Yep.
It makes it very specific. There's no confusion about that. And I, and I think that the, the timeframes that you've come up with are, are, are realistic. And if they're not realistic, we can change them.
So the other.
But we can at least start with, with this.
The other thing that occurs to me as we're kind of discussing this is that Ed and I can do a little bit of homework and look around and see what some of the other communities are doing in terms of application submissions. And that may give people some level of comfort to know where someone in line with what other communities are doing. I think we will find, some will have less than what we're suggesting, but I'm, I'm certain we're going to find at least a couple that have more. So that will at least give some context to it so that if anybody does get outraged and complain, there's at least some backup there to.
But I'm, I'm thinking of Portsmouth. They have two planners. They, they have, they, they have a planner and an assistant planner who has all of the credentials. So they have two people who are full-time and they're built out.
We'll do, we'll do something that's, that's.
So they can, they can afford a short timeline.
But we, we can look at communities that are somewhat similar in terms of the fact that there's just one planning, you know, planner. There's, there is, you know, land available for development. We're not going to compare you to, you know, the city of Warwick. We'll do some.
For Central Falls, please.
Right, we'll, we'll do some, some even comparisons and see what we come up with.
That's, that's fine. Any, anybody else here, everybody understands, I think, what Ashley is trying to accomplish here. It's, it's for the, it, it's really, it's good, it's needed. I completely support it. Ashley, are you getting the kind of feedback that you would find helpful? Um, Ashley, are you getting the kind of feedback that you would find helpful?
I think he needs to know whether you want one or two tiers.
Yeah, I mean, do you, I, I'm fine with having everything at the seven-week timeframe.
I, 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 I think I now agree with Tricia that.
Okay.
Just one. Don't make a distinction between the large and the small because, you know, as Tricia pointed out, sometimes the small guys are so disorganized, they need more time.
Plus, I'm not sure that some of them realize which categories are even in to start with.
That's true.
They don't know whether or not that to be advertised or not. It's just simple. I'm not sure two weeks makes a.
Yeah.
A difference.
So if we're good with the seven weeks, um, I will take that document. I will track change it. I will, we will finalize this based on that. We'll bring that back to you in August.
Right, okay. And, and hopefully our August meeting will allow us to do some of these housekeeping tasks that are long overdue. Okay, is there anything else on this agenda item? And hearing nothing. Okay, so we've already done G so that we can skip down to three H. General Asm- Assembly Legislative Updates Relative to Planning and Zoning. And, um, the governor just signed thirteen bills.
Yes, he did.
And a lot of it has to do with density, right?
Some of it has to do with density, yep. I don't, I don't know if you have questions about any of them, if you want me to.
Just give us a quick, just give us a quick summary. I think everybody would appreciate that. There, there, there was an article in the Providence Journal. It was pretty good. But, um.
So the only bill that did not pass that I had previously brought to your attention was the accessory dwelling unit bill that remains the, it remains in state law as is, which is problematic. And actually, John and I have spoken, um, about that. Since we're going to live with that for another year, it probably makes sense for the town to draft an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. You don't have one. And it's already become a topic of discussion um, that I think Todd and I and John have spent more time on than we wanted to.
Yeah, right. I, I, yes, and the sooner the better to, to, uh,
The problem with.
To protect the town.
Yeah, I mean, well, the problem with the state law is that what it's, it's, it's internally inconsistent and it's extremely difficult to interpret and enforce because it is internally inconsistent. It's incredibly poorly written. Um, the intent was to fix it and it is the only bill that did not pass. It was the only bill that was needed to fix a legitimate, like, inconsistency and problem, and it's the only bill they did not pass. Um, so very high-level overview. I can tell you, we are gonna have to make changes to inclusionary zoning. If you just, if you, and that's a policy decision for the town, if you decide to keep inclusionary zoning based on the changes that have been made, um.
And, and by that, you, you, you mean affordable versus market right?
So the inclusion, you have an inclusionary zoning provision. I don't think you call it inclusionary zoning though. You call it something else, but inclusionary zoning is the provision that subdivisions over a certain size, and I think you trigger it at major land development, or excuse me, major subdivision, are required to include a certain percentage of affordable units. And that is a maintenance issue. That is, the intent of inclusionary zoning has always been that as you produce market rate units, um, for, you know, subdivisions over a certain size, you require a certain percentage of affordable units. That helps you from backsliding as you produce more market rate. So you do have a provision. The provision that's in there is not going to be consistent with the new state law. The new law actually mandates the density bo- the density bonus. It increases the, it increases the minimum percentage of affordable units to twenty-five percent. So it mimics a comprehensive permit, but it also mandates that for every, for every affordable, you have to give a market, a to-market rate. So it mandates the, the density.
Two for every affordable?
Yes. So that becomes a policy decision for the town, whether or not you want to continue to im- implement inclusionary zoning. And that's probably worth a, a discussion about what does that look like? What doesn't, what does, what does that turn an inclusionary application into? Um, is, are we getting enough benefit out of the affordable units that it offsets the additional required market rates? So it, I mean, it's a math problem, um, but it's one that the town needs to discuss and decide whether or not that's a policy you want to continue. Um, comprehensive permits, there is no longer a master plan stage of review, which I, I can't understand why anybody would be okay with that, including a developer, because master plan is the vesting stage. So it now, you're not vested until you have fully engineered your plans at preliminary, which makes no sense to me at all, but that's what they did. Um. Zoning ordinances, you can no longer have a special use permit unless you have specific and objective criteria for that special use permit. You can create categories of special use permits and you can, you can design the specific and objective criteria for the categories of permits, of special use permits. But if a special use permit does not have specific and objective criteria, it is considered a permitted use. So you need to look at all your special use permits. You need to determine whether you want to categorize them into groups and then create the specific and objective criteria for each of those groups, or whether you want to create the specific and objective criteria for every single special use permit. Um, so that again, that's a policy discussion for the town. Yep.
Of all the things they give me, Ajaduk, about all these bills that got passed, for Tiverton, I think that that's almost at the top of the list because we have so many special use permits in our zoning code in part because, um, we don't have public sewer and we don't have public water everywhere. So, and we've got two reservoirs, which is fairly unusual for most communities. And, um, so we've got a lot of special use permits that are, you know, based on, you know, real environmental issues that, you know, we have to be cognizant of. We also have a lot of special use permits because the way that our town is laid out, particularly Main Road, for example, you know, it's essentially a strip that is bordered on either side by, you know, by residential, heavily developed residential neighborhoods. So it's not as though our, it's not as though our, our commercial zone is a, is a big rectangle or a big blob, right? That so everything inside it is okay. So we, we really have a lot of special use permits and I'm, I'm really worried that smart developers are gonna look at this and realize that there's going to be some period of time, starting what, January one?
Mm-hmm.
Where if towns don't have these things sorted out.
Mm-hmm.
It's open season.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think that we need to really, we need to get the council to understand this and, and what this means and what the potential is. And then we need to work with you and our legal council to figure out what we do if we can't get, if we can't get the work done of sorting through all of these between, not just sorting through them, but I'm assuming that they all need public hearings and they all need advertising, right? Which to my mind means that you would need to be literally started today, right?
I needed to start like six months ago.
Like six months ago, right? Which is, I mean, I'm, I like, the fact that the general assembly doesn't understand that this is not a doable project in six months is beyond me. I, I don't get that, but, um, but I think this is one that we really need to get council level attention on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, before we end up with all kinds of, um, applications for uses that will become permitted by right, that will send the town into just apoplectic, uh, fits.
Mm-hmm. I, I, I couldn't agree with you more and I think that the, to cut. I mean, you're essentially being asked to come up with every scenario under the sun you can think of for a specific type of application and write those specific and objective criteria before you've ever even seen the application. And the point was made on this, this particular bill that special use permit standards are often site-specific. So how could we possibly cover every scenario when one site to another, the same use, like, and I'll use a drive-through as an example. A, a drive-through, you know, on a small lot on Main Road is gonna be hugely problematic if you don't have the queue, you know, to get.
You won't pick up room for two cars.
Exactly. But that same drive-through on a larger piece of property, not on that main road, could be fine. And so we're, we're definitely, it, it is, I mean, that alone could be six months of conversation on, on looking at every single special use permit and categorizing them and trying to determine, you know, what the standards are for that special use. So I, I agree with you. I think it's, I mean.
I think the general assembly might find that there are a lot of things that are, that are special use permits in a lot of places, at least for some, at least until the, the general assembly realizes how silly this is, are just going to become not permitted uses because that's the only way the towns are gonna deal with it. They're just gonna say.
Uh, each town be able to write a letter to, to pause, like, what's, is that a good idea?
The only way this is getting paused is if they reconvene in the fall because this is effective January one. They're not in session.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and what if each town, you reach out to the towns that you could and, and got everyone to write letters to, you know, kind of slow it down?
Uh, there was, there was.
Opposition.
There was opposition.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Fell on deaf ears. I mean, I don't think the opposition was strong enough and the opposition unfortunately was mischaracterized as anti-development and that's not the case. The case is, we need adequate time to address these issues thoughtfully at the local level. Um, when you, when you stack all thirteen bills and look at, not all of them are gonna require major overhauls, but when you stack all thirteen bills and you look at the magnitude of the changes that are necessary, six months is, it's gonna go by in the blink of, and you don't really have six months because if you back up, and then you're holding a public hearing in December, which is a fantastic time to hold a public hearing to make changes to zoning and also assuming that happens in one meeting, which it's not going to. Um, so realistically, you need to have draft language like next month.
Which we're, we're not.
In order to go through the, the appropriate process and give the public adequate time to participate in the public hearing process. Because, and you, you think about it as well, these are, they have to go to the planning board for an advisory opinion. That's a month.
Mm-hmm.
They have to go to the town council for public hearing. I don't know if it's done here, but in some places, you have to have two readings before you can have a public hearing. Some communities have ordinance committees. It's gonna have to go to their ordinance committee before it can even go to their town council or city council. So you subtract all that time out and you're left with this much time to write the language.
Right. Well, I, I really think that of all of them, this is, this is the one that we need to get the council's attention right now to understand and, and to work with Ashley and to work with our legal council to figure out what the options are here because, um, I really do think when you look at the number of special use permits that we have and why we have them, if we don't have valid reasons and we don't have all this work done, then, you know, like I said, we will have.
They'll become permitted uses.
They'll become permitted uses and developers will see that. And even if they think this is only gonna last for a little while before they figure it out, there'll be a rash of applications and these things.
Oh, I expect that Ja- like January second, there'll be a flood of applications of people. And it's not, and you have to think about as well that I would agree that this particular change is, this particular change on top of the changes to the subdivision enabling act amount to a massive undertaking in terms of addressing your regulatory framework. Um, those are gonna be the two heaviest lifts. The, uh, the subdivision changes shift a significant burden of review and approval authority over to the administrative officer. So you will no longer see, um, minor subdi- minor frontage lot subdivisions. Minor subdivisions are now nine lots or less. Major subdivisions are ten lots or more. You will not see a minor subdivision unless they're creating a street or unless they require some form of relief from the regulations. You are also gonna be required to do unified development review, which means they no longer go to the zoning board. You give them the relief. So, and there's now a definition for minor land development and for major land development that is set in state law. It's no longer up to the municipalities to determine what is minor and what is major. And we're looking at, I believe it's seventy-five hundred square feet of commercial or industrial or manufacturing floor area. Anything seventy-five hundred square feet or less is an administrative function. So there's a, a, a definite, a huge shift of responsibility over to the administrative officer, which is why I said when we looked at the technical review committee rules and regulations, there is the ability to have that technical review committee play a larger role in the review process. And I think that is going to be instrumental in making sure that this burden does not fall on the shoulders of one individual to make these decisions. It's got to become a process that goes through the technical review committee. Um, but that's, that's what we're, that's where we are. There are changes, there are other minor changes, um, that are not nearly as impactful. I think we've, we've probably discussed the ones that have the most impact and require the most work. There are other minor things that are being adjusted as well.
So, any questions for Ashley? Okay, Sue.
Uh, since I'm now on the zoning review, zoning ordinance review committee, do you have this summarized somewhere that all that you've said so you can email to us?
Yeah, I provided an overview to the planning board. The statewide planning and Rhode Island APA did a planners' roundtable where we summarized all of the bills. Um, the planner, the, uh, Rhode Island chapter of the American Planning Association also commissioned, um, a, a, like a legal review that has created a summary of all of the bills and the impact. So I can share all of that with everyone.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I believe that brings us to the end of that agenda item. And so now, uh, three I is status of zoning code rewrite. And this is a discussion.
No. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we, I have that. I have others as well. Um.
So, so we're, we're on the last agenda.
Yeah, so the zoning, so I have to coordinate with the clerk's office and get organized around, um, initiating a meeting with the zoning committee that's been formed. Um, as I said, unfortunate, unfortunately, the, the changes to the state enabling have. Um, as I said, unfortunate, unfortunately, the, the changes to the state enabling have kind of inserted themselves into this pro- I mean, we knew this was coming, um, to some degree, but it's become a, that, that's become a priority that's not optional. And so there needs to be, and I've been talking to, to Chris about this. Um, there needs to be some kind of coordinated effort in terms of the fo- the focus. There needs to be a, a, basically a policy decision from the town, like, do you wanna continue working on the zoning update? Do you want Weston and Sampson to, because the zoning work doesn't include all of those changes to state law, it included changes to your regulations based on best practices, based on the comprehensive plan and all of that. So there need, that conversation really does need to happen, and, and we need, the, the town needs to make a policy decision, whether those two things run concar- like, the town has to decide how they wanna address the enabling legislation. So, and I, I am having that conversation with Chris. I know that he is meeting with, um, the league, I guess has a meeting tomorrow, and so he expects that this will be discussed. Um, you know, there's a little bit of a wrinkle in, in the whole thing as well, not that you could make it any worse, but, um, there was some technical assistance money available for this that has been restricted, I'll say, to a certain degree. Um, and I think the reality is, is that the money won't be released until it's not gonna be, um, that effective in helping communities do this, so.
I get that, you know, obviously the, the new law is a priority. I will say this with, um, our liaisons sitting here, that if the zoning rewrite can gets kicked down the road one more time, you know, it, it's going to be unfortunate beyond words. So I understand it might cost more, but we might be getting desperate here. So I, I hope that, I realize it's, it's all gonna be a bigger project, but please, I hope we don't end up kicking that zoning rewrite can down the road again.
No, it's gonna be done.
I mean, I, we, we will work on whatever the town prioritizes and tells us to, to work on, um.
Off-the-wall question, given how, you know, I know that there was opposition to this, and I know that there, and I know that, um, the, you know, APA, you know, tried to get people to understand what they were, you know, placing on the towns. But now that the reality is sinking there, coupled with the fact that the quote-unquote, there'll be all this technical assistance money that's available, don't worry, we'll help you pay for this now that this is all gone. Do you think that there is any possibility that, and if I were going to lead meeting, I'd be saying this, that, that, that if the legislature is not willing to, you know, call a special session to come back in and give towns more time and more money to do this, that, you know, that the towns that are really negatively affected, which I'm guessing is just about every single one in Rhode Island, or, or pretty close to a lot of them.
It's gonna be a lot of them, I mean, you're gonna find communities that are gonna be significantly less affected because they're, they're either built out.
Yeah.
Um, they don't see subdivisions because they don't have available land to subdivide. Um, they have, you know, a handful of special use permits and not, you know, thirty of them. Um, so it, it is gonna have a different effect across the board. I will say that I, I think, my assessment is that the communities that have the least resources and the most land are going to be the ones that are going to be the most affected, um, by not having time to really kind of thoughtfully go through what the, what the required changes are and how you address those changes. There, there are gonna be places where you're gonna grab a definition from state law and you're gonna plug it in because you don't have any other option.
Yeah.
But, to your point, for the special use permits and the specific and objective criteria, there's nothing to plug in, you have to come up with that.
Right.
So that's pretty time-consuming.
Right.
Um, so there will be easy things that you can, like, you won't have an option. Minor, minor subdivisions are nine lots or less, you're just gonna take that definition from state law and you're gonna just replace what you have. The time-consuming part of it and the part where I think there is the potential for, I'll, I wanna, I don't wanna characterize this incorrectly, but the potential for, I would say, you know, a community to miss an opportunity to protect a resource or to mitigate an issue is going to happen in those types of circumstances where you have to, like, from whole cloth, we're creating these sp- specific and objective criteria, and you're doing it in a very compressed timeframe while you're also working on other things at the same time. And so that's where I think there, there's gonna become more issues.
Yeah.
You know, where I just have to grab a definition and plug it in, I, that's easy.
Yeah.
It's the other pieces of it that are, you know, figuring out how you can utilize the technical review committee in ways that you haven't before, but still meet the letter of the law to ensure that the administrative officer has technical support in decision-making because it no longer comes to this board, it no longer goes through the process of the discussions that you have now where somebody mentions something and it spurs a conversation. And, I mean, we all know, problems get solved by people sitting down together and putting their heads together and talking through the issues. That doesn't happen in this realm anymore, so we need to figure out how the technical review committee can fill that gap but still fall within the letter of the law in terms of what they're allowing the technical review committee to do. And that's gonna take some creativity, it's gonna take some talking and some thought to, to figure out how to do that. And unfortunately, when you try to do that in a really compressed timeframe while you're doing six other things, um, you often miss opportunities and, and things slip through the cracks, and that's, that's certainly a concern.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, I wish I had better news for everybody.
Is there any way we can band together with the other towns that are in the same light that we are and say, hey, General Assembly, can, can we ask for more time?
I mean, I think, I, I, I won't say there's, I mean, what, whatever, whatever momentum you've pulled together, you, you pulled together. I mean, I will say that the A- Rhode Island APA, if we, at the, towards the end, if we asked for nothing else, it was to please stagger the timeframes, do not make all of this effective January one. Like, we roll over, we accept that, you know, these changes are happening, you gotta stagger them. You've got to give communities time to, like, even if you put them in chunks, like, if you take all thirteen of them and you put, you know, separate them out and you implement them over, you know, a two-year timeframe, communities can respond in a thoughtful way where they can go through the proper process to do it. And we, we asked repeatedly and didn't happen.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, so I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda. Our next meeting is August first, coming right up. And so do we have a privileged motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion that we adjourn at eight thirty-one.
Thank you, we're adjourned.